Implementation. Consultants, including financial advisors and our general counsel specializing in financial agreements, as well as Sean Marshall with Lean Energy, supporting the board and our interim executive officer on all startup items. As a reminder, the clerk will be reading the first 10 public comments received on each agenda item, remaining within the three-minute time for each. All comments that were received after the public deadline, 3:00 PM today, will be forwarded to the board. We will be moving item four, Report from Finance and Risk Management Committee, to just before item nine, Approval of Agreements with River City Bank in Emerald Blue for Credit and Banking Services, since they are related. Though we have tested our system here in practice for tonight's meeting, there will be hiccups and we will adjust. If you get disconnected and need assistance, then please reach out to sebastianssarriay@sandiego.gov. If you are a member of the public and are having difficulty submitting a public comment, then please reach out to Sebastian. For my fellow board members, the board clerk will conduct a voice vote for attendance and for all other votes. If you would like to be recognized to speak, please use the button to raise your hand. If you're not speaking, then please stay unmute so that we do not get background feedback. We do have a hefty and important agenda for tonight's meeting, and then two items are on our closed agenda, so I will try to keep us moving as quickly as possible. I did want to note that our vice chair, Steve Padilla, couldn't be here tonight with us. He is at home recovering from the coronavirus. Please join me in wishing him well and that every day brings him even greater progress. We look forward to seeing Steve, seeing him remotely or in person soon. Now, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance. And nobody is put down, so I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation
One nation Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Now we'll have a roll call vote by our board clerk.
City of La Mesa representative?
Here.
City of San Diego representative?
Here.
City of Imperial Beach representative?
Here.
City of Tula Vista representative? And city of Encinitas representative?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And bear with me on some of this. So, items to be added, withdrawn, or reordered. So, we're going to put the item number four, the Report from Finance and Risk, down before item number nine, since I already announced that. And there is no other adjustments to the schedule, the agenda. So, let's go to presentations. And we have a presentation from the city of San Diego on its franchise agreement negotiations with San Diego Gas and Electric.
Thank you Chair Mosca. This is Lee Friedman. I am program manager with the city of San Diego. And I'm here to give you a presentation on our electric and gas franchise fee. I've given this presentation a couple of times, but I've updated it a little bit post-COVID-19 with the timeline and such, and we'll get to that in a minute. But I just wanted to thank you all for making time for me to make this presentation today. Next slide, please. So, first and foremost, what is a franchise? You know, when most people think of a franchise, they're thinking of McDonald's or a Subway, Dunkin' Donuts. You know, this is the idea that maybe you're paying to use somebody's IP, the ability to use the recipes, things of that nature. Next slide. In the city of San Diego, franchises are a bit different. They're a lease for the exclusive use of our public right-of-way. And we have three main franchises. Our first is our franchise for electric and gas services with San Diego Gas and Electric. Our second is our franchises for cable companies, like Time Order Cable and Cox. And then finally, we have franchises for refuse hauling, like with waste management. A lot of people don't know this, but franchises are actually governed in our charter. Charter section 103 says that the city council may adopt via an ordinance a franchise by a two-thirds affirmative vote, but only after the opportunity for free and open competition. So, I know Chair, you introduced this as a negotiation. In fact, this is a brand-new franchise. Our franchise expires at the end of this year, and we are entering a period of free and open competition so that SDGNE, but any other potential entities may bid on this franchise. Next slide. So, what is the public right-of-way? Now, I know I'm speaking to a bunch of municipal wonks and experts here, so you probably know this pretty well. But just for anybody else who's listening, the public right-of-way is basically your street, street and sidewalk. And the idea is that a franchise fee recovers the cost of utilities companies' use of this space. Now, a public right-of-ways are different all over the country, but generally, the way that they are laid out is that in the center of the street, you'll have your largest public utilities, like storm drains and sewer mains. Then you get to your water mains, which are closer to the curb. And then generally, hugging or right next to the curb are your private utilities, like gas, electric, and cable lines. This particular public right-of-way shows an undergrounded electrical system. Obviously, in some neighborhoods, you would have some of the lines above ground on the sidewalk on poles. Next slide, please. So, this is just a look back. The city of San Diego has had a franchise for electric and gas services since 1920. And our first franchise was with San Diego Gas and Electric. It was a 50-year deal. Then we negotiated, or entered into a new franchise in 1970, again, another 50-year term. And during that 50-year term, there was a 30-year re-opener in which the city negotiated the addition of the utility undergrounding surcharge back in 2002. So, this is just to show that there's basically been a long history of having a franchise with San Diego Gas and Electric. Next slide. For those of you who don't know, the city has a utility undergrounding program separate from the state Rule 20A programs. In 1970, the franchise required SDGNE to budget 4.5% of its electric revenue to underground overhead lines, but the formulation of that changed over years. And then in 2002, the CPUC resolution authorized the city to create a municipal undergrounding surcharge of 3.53% on San Diego customers, on city of San Diego customer electricity bills. And this 3.53% all goes to a utility undergrounding program. And in the past couple of years, it approximately generates around $60 to $65 million. And that money is all spent on undergrounding power lines in the city of San Diego. To date, we've done about 437 miles, around 1,200 remain. Next slide. So, this is just a brief look of San Diego's energy history. This is not an exhaustive list, and I think I've just pulled out some of the hits. But starting in 1970, the city entered into a 50-year franchise agreement with SDGNE. In 1984, the city agreed to take ownership of streetlights converted to underground. Prior to 1984, it was actually the utility who owned the streetlights. In 1998, the state established the CAESA, the California Independent Systems Operator. And this was after a deregulation energy crisis that happened in the early 90s. CAESA added parity and fairness back into the grit. This sort of led the way, you know, to what we see in the early 2000s. One, with the creation of AB117, which is important to probably everybody here on this board, which allowed for CCAs to form. And also, this is around the time the city entered into negotiations with SDGNE to create and expand the utility undergrounding program. In 2015, the city approved the Climate Action Plan, which called for 100% renewable energy by 2035. And in 2019, the city launched the Community Choice Energy Program with all of you wonderful folks to meet that 100% goal. Next slide, please. So, this is the major terms of the current franchise for electricity and gas. So, it's a fee on gross receipts, which is revenue, for better lack of term, is set at 3%, and for the undergrounding program, it's at 4.5%. Again, the major terms of the current franchise are the contract length, which is 50 years, the duty to provide gas and electric service, that SDGNE is responsible for costs associated with conflicts in the public right-of-way, and that SDGNE is also responsible for coordination of works and installations in the public right-of-way, which is governed by a manual administrative practice. In this term, and actually, most other franchises across the state, there is an early termination option that allows the city to purchase and condemn SDGNE assets to move towards municipalization. This is not unique to the city of San Diego. This is generally found in all franchise agreements throughout the state. Next slide. So, how does this compare? Most cities actually have perpetual terms. The city of San Diego is a rare exception. And in SDGNE service territory, only five of the 29 cities have franchises with expirations. The average franchise fee for electricity in SDGNE territory is about 1.1%. And the average franchise fee for gas is about 1%. So, the franchise fees paid to the city of San Diego are higher than any California city. What's important to note here, though, is that the franchise fee is set at 3%. A base rate is applied to that. So, SDGNE pays 1.1% roughly as a base rate to the city. The additional 1.9% is actually paid via a differential surcharge. So, that's paid right on city of San Diego residents' electrical bills. It does not come from SDGNE. Next slide. So, what does this look like in our budget? This is a tracking over the last couple of years. On the left-hand side of your screen is what we receive from the 3% franchise fees for gas and electric. And on the right is what we receive in that additional utility undergrounding surcharge. So, you know, roughly speaking, the city is bringing in about $120 to $130 million a year in franchise fees. If we go to the next slide. Next slide, please. What's important to see is that how this breaks down in the city. So, again, this is what we receive for the 3% franchise fee. And in 2020, fiscal year 2020, that was about $51.1 million of that went to the general fund. And about $17 million goes to the Environmental Growth Fund. And this is how the breakdown happens via the MUNI code every year. About 75% goes to the general fund, and 25% goes to this environmental growth fund. All of you probably understand very well what a general fund is. But this is really important for the city because the general fund supports all of our core services. The Environmental Growth Fund is an interesting fund. It was set up, I think, when they used the term "environmental growth", back when this fund was set up, is a little bit different than the way that we use the term "environment" today. It mainly goes to support park projects, open space acquisition, mitigation, and things of that nature. So, maybe a bit different than, you know, how we use environment today, maybe to think about like GSG reduction or things of that nature. But some examples of projects that have received EGF funding over the past years are on the right-hand side. Seismic retrofits, playground improvements, like dredging. Next slide, please. The utility undergrounding program, and this is a hyperlink, but I don't think we need to click on it today. I assume that this presentation will be sent out to all of the board members. If you ever feel like clicking this, it's a hyperlink to picture, and it will bring you to our utility undergrounding website. But this shows where the utility undergrounding funds are being spent. So, all of those splotches throughout the city are utility undergrounding areas, where eventually, we're going to be converting the overhead lines to underground ones. And that's what that $65 million that we sort of receive annually is spent on. Next slide, please. So, looking forward, what are the possibilities for a new franchise? We are currently assessing other franchises and receiving feedback from interested stakeholders developing matrix of potential options for consideration. And right now, we have expert consultants who are working on putting together a draft of recommendations that we'll be bringing to our city council to sort of create the framework of what this next franchise will look like. We had a, you know, we've done many case studies, but one that I put on this presentation is Tula Vista, which negotiated a new franchise in 2004. It was a 10-year term with an automatic 10-year extension. There was relocation undergrounding of SDGNE assets as part of it, along with the creation of parks along its transmission corridor. There was a one-time payment to the city of 250K and an allocation of $2 million annually for energy conservation projects. Tula Vista also increased its franchise fee from 1.1% to 1.25%. So, we're looking at what our neighbors around us have done, but also what people have done up and down the state, taking into account that obviously, we want to get a good deal for the city of San Diego, the best deal that we possibly can get. Next slide, please. So, this is where things get a little less exact. I had a timeline I was working off of up until about six weeks ago. And as I'm sure many of you are experiencing, timelines are kind of all up in the air right now. But this is what, as of right now, what we're going to be aiming for. So, in February, we collected feedback from a request for expressions of interest that we put out and did community outreach that actually went through March. March and April, we've been drafting the actual franchise fee agreement. This is what our consultants are working on right now. Our intent is to have it drafted, that ready by the end of the month. May-June timeframe, we're looking to bring that draft agreement for public review and input at city council. In June-July timeframe, hopefully, we'll get good feedback, be able to finalize what that franchise looks like, and release it as an invitation to bid. In July-August, we would receive responses to the ITB and prepare to bring bids forward to city council in time for September to hopefully present a recommendation on the proposed franchise agreement. Now, you'll see some asterisks over there that go down to the right-hand side of the page. Obviously, there are things that could prevent this from going as smoothly as it's laid out here. But I think it's important to note that if we end up with unresponsive bids, or if the city council does not approve a proposed franchise, we might have to enter an extension period of the current franchise, since it does expire at the end of this year. And then, our hope is that if council is happy with our respondents and the bid is struck off and given to a, you know, responsible grantee, then October through January, we would get any CPUC approvals if necessary, but also just do the, you know, the work of shifting over to the new franchise so that we could have it in place and in time before the 1971 expires. Next slide. So, these are just some fun pictures I found on the internet. But generally, the idea here is that, you know, the energy, as you all well know, you know, the energy marketplace is changing drastically and rapidly. And we want to make sure that, you know, we're setting up San Diego for a dynamic energy future. Next slide. And that we are, you know, being, you know, responsible to, you know, our future citizens and future ratepayers of the city of San Diego by getting as good of a deal as we can in this next franchise. And I think that's the end of the presentation. There are some additional slides on here as an appendix that you guys can scroll through at your own pace, if you would like. But otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your presentation. It's very exciting stuff that you guys are doing. So, do you have a new estimation in terms of when you will have a renewal? Renewal contract, when the contract will be in finished form?
So, the timeline that we have right there is the best estimate that I have right now. Our intent is to still have a franchise in place, in time, before the expiration of our current franchise in January 2021. So, if we're able to hit all of our, you know, if we're able to hit all of the goals that we have set out before us and get to city council with a responsible bid in September, then I think that will have all the time we need to get that set up and in place before the January expiration date.
Perfect. All right. Any board members have any questions or comments?
Lee, it's Bill.
Hey, Bill.
I realize this might be academic, but I'll ask it. So, some, an entity other than SDGNE could bid in this system you have right now?
Yes. And actually, that's how it was set up in 1970 as well. The structure of an invitation to bid, basically, it functions much like eBay. You agree to the terms and conditions, and you throw down a bid. And the way that it functioned in 1970, and likely how it'll do it again, is you set a minimum bid amount. And then, the entities that are interested and are responsible, so that means they have to meet certain criteria. You can't just have somebody with deep pockets come in and say, "I want to buy utility." But responsible bidders will be able to show up and bid, as long as they agree to all of the conditions of the franchise, will be able to bid against each other to ultimately win the franchise.
So, I realize this is academically, but in theory, PG&E or SoCal Edison could bid against SDGNE for this franchise?
Theoretically, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Will the surcharge remain in the new agreement? Or is that something that's still being negotiated?
That's something that we're looking at very carefully. Obviously, we understand that there are certain CPUC rules in place that do not allow for the, they don't allow, you know, different franchises to subsidize. You can't have, you know, some cities subsidizing other cities with different franchises, right? With different rates. But there is the possibility that, you know, SDGNE shareholders, for instance, could pay for a higher franchise and not have it end up on the backs of ratepayers. But these are still sort of the tricky legal areas we're working through.
All right. Perfect. All right. Well, not seeing anybody else's hand raised, and nobody else jumping in. I want to thank you for being here with us tonight and presenting on your franchise agreement.
I really appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
All right. You're welcome. All right. Let's move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the consent calendar. We have item one, Approval of the Minutes for the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power Special Meeting, held on Thursday, February 27, 2020. Do we have any comments or questions on the minutes? And if we don't, then I would entertain a motion.
I would move to the minutes.
All right. We have a motion by Board Member Baber and a second by Board Member West. And we will do a roll call vote. Megan, if you want to do that.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. Perfect. Good. We are now moving on to our regular agenda. And then, we're on item number two, which is Operations and Administration Report from the Interim Executive Officer, Cody Huben.
Hi, everybody. Of course, I feel like I'm having internet issues. So, let me know if you have trouble hearing me, and I'll switch to the, I'll call in through my phone. But this is item number two. This is our standard monthly operations and administration report. And so, you see, we do, the first thing we have on the agenda is a COVID-19 impact update. I get asked this question quite a bit of how COVID-19 is impacting our operations or startup activities. And the short answer is, aside from the general slowdown that we're all experiencing just from a sort of slowdown in business, because there's a lot of distractions, we're not seeing too much of an impact for us. We are, it feels like we're more than full steam ahead. And so, we're monitoring everything. There's potential impacts, obviously, to the energy sector, potential to price effects in the markets. Other active CCAs that are operational are seeing impacts to some of the reduced collection and monthly payments. But we're obviously not there yet, so we're not seeing that impact. We're monitoring everything. We're working with our consultants to monitor. But as of now, we just wanted to put a note on there and say that we're tracking it, but we aren't seeing any serious impacts this line from a flight delay and business in general. And the next item is item B, it's vendor RFPs. This list is finally dwindling. It started out pretty long. And the next one that we have, and that we're about to release, is the Marketing Communication Services RFP. We're hoping to get that out tomorrow, actually. And this is the last in our shortlist. I'm sure there will be others coming up in the near future, but this is our immediate need. And we'll report back to the board on, and share with everybody in our email list once that's released, and we'll open it up for a 30-day proposal deadline. Item number C on this item is Discussions with San Diego Gas and Electric. And these items are really looking at regular meetings. We started ramping up our meetings with them just a bit. There's a lot more discussion and business to talk about with them. And now that we have Pacific Energy Advisors, our energy consulting firm onboard, we're able to have more detailed and kind of robustly type conversations with SDGNE. And the most recent ones are surrounding the procurement of resource adequacy. SDGNE is about to issue requests for offers, or RFOs, for power, for that type of power in the coming months. And we've been preparing with Pacific Energy Advisors and BB&amp;K, our general counsel, all the documents we need to prepare in advance in order to be ready for that, to respond to that RFO. And we also, actually, SDGNE also mentioned, we check in on their launch schedule for their own customer service bill system replacement. And that's a pretty significant change that they're working on on their end that could potentially impact our operations and our launch. And so, we frequently ask about that. And at the last meeting, they updated us that that's still on track to at least be in beta testing and early launch in January of '21, which is good for us and our timing. And then, again, this will be critical to our own launch. So, we are monitoring that pretty closely. And we've submitted some filings with them in partnership with SDGNE, including our resource adequacy forecast for '21, and shared that with them. And the last item in this section is that we also submitted an extension to the California Public Utilities Commission to file and submit all of our CCA registration packet materials to the CPUC. We asked for an extension through May 31st. We anticipate, based on board action tonight, submitting that, those documents all, hopefully, within the next week. The outstanding item, we'll discuss later on the agenda. But we'll submit all of those documentation requirements and have a bond filing of $100,000 that we will submit in the month of May. The last item here is a regulatory update. And Ty Tostel is on the call tonight, the meeting tonight, in case there's any questions. But we are monitoring and actively engaged in regulatory and legislative matters. And I think, as you all are getting a sense now, the regulatory space is very dynamic. And things are moving very quickly, and we're actively engaged. And thanks to Ty Tostel, his support, we're able to engage in whatever matters appropriate in each of those filings. And we've attached his April regulatory update to this report. And if there's any specific questions on any of those activities, he's available and on the line. And Ty, I'm going to totally put you on the spot and see if there's anything you want to share or highlight from that report.
Thank you, Cody. I appreciate it. Hello, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to join you today. Now that that was a great overview, I appreciate it. And the only thing, a couple of things I wanted to mention is that we have been specifically actively participating in the PCIA proceeding and supporting CalCCA's proposals for an allocation-based process as we move through the launch of SDCP. And, you know, hundreds of thousands of customers come over to SDCP and leave the utility. There are outstanding questions about what to do with SDG, the resources in SDGNE's portfolio. And the PCIA proceeding is addressing that question right now, so we've been actively participating in that. We also have been participating in some compliance-related matters around, again, around SDGNE's portfolio and authorizations that they requested around what's called their bundled portfolio, bundled procurement portfolio. And happy to answer any questions anybody has about that, but I just wanted to give a brief overview of our activities. In addition to that, we are regularly consulting with the management team and informing them about regulatory developments and answering questions and conducting research as needed. So, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I have a question, Ty. Can you see me? It's Bill.
Yeah. Hang on, Bill. I can hear you. Go ahead.
The earlier item we had was the San Diego franchise agreement. When they negotiate that with SDGNE, does that come to the PUC for approval when the deal is done?
You know, I haven't not been involved in the franchise agreement process, Bill. And so, I'm not certain about the approvals, but I'd be happy to research that and get back to the board about it.
I, I was just curious to see how, when they eventually settle on it, whether that's something you'll look at for us. It would seem to me that the PUC would probably have to sign off on that, but I don't know for sure. Just interesting to know. They do, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's deal with that when they're, when we're ready to.
And happy to assist and follow up with you, any of you about that.
Cody, are you done with your report?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
All right. All right, well, you guys can tell from what Cody just talked about and Ty, that a lot has been going on. So despite COVID-19, we are making great progress and doing a ton of work, thanks to Cody, and thank you to Ty for representing us really well. You guys get a lot of information from Ty as well, on all the regulatory happenings. And so if you have any questions, now is the time to ask him, or even offline, you're able to ask him as well. But a lot is going on. Any board members, questions, comments, thoughts? Mark? Board Member West, you're muted on your side.
Is that better?
Better.
Hear you now.
Okay. So, um, thank you, Cody and Ty, for a good overview. And I appreciate all the work you've been doing. I, I'm just going to push this out. Twenty-two, 26 million people are unemployed. What do, what do we see? Are we looking long range about that impact and how that could really play into our rate structure and, and all the things that are going to be moving forward? We're, we're in a dynamic time right now that I don't think we ever expected. So it's hard to look into the crystal ball, but what, what, what is the, has anybody started thinking about how this is going to play out over the next six to 12 months?
I'm happy to answer a couple, on a couple of issues that are unfolding right now, but if it's all right with Cody, unless she has anything else that she wants to discuss first.
No, that's fine. And I was just going to mention that we do also have Pacific Energy Advisors on the line and Kirby, scrolling through the panelist list. Kirby Dusell is on the line, so if you want to have him also chime in after you speak, Ty, that'd be great.
Please, give me as much information as you can, because it's, it's definitely, I think it's on everyone's mind.
Sure. Well, let me go ahead and mention a couple of things. First, before I delve into that, you know, I think that we, we are fortunate in that the, the power sector hasn't seen, seen the same kind of disruptions that we've seen in other sectors, other areas of the economy. So that's, that's been a fortunate thing. That's not to say there are no effects or adverse consequences, but, you know, certainly we're doing better than the tourism industry right now. And, you know, for, for example, and, you know, I think we can be glad for that. One of the things that, that has happened is that the, all three of the investor on utilities, including SDG&E, have implemented short-term measures around disconnections and rates to make sure that people are not disconnected while the, the virus is, is, is going on and people are still being affected and that people are, you know, obviously, a lot of people are out of work. And so that was relatively good stuff. There were some concerns that were raised about how those funds would be collected and distributed to CCA programs. And so CalCCA has taken that up and is, is addressing that. And I'm referring to CalCCA, the statewide trade organization. I've been monitoring that situation and supporting their efforts as well. And so those, while they don't have an immediate impact on SDCP, because it's not currently serving customers, it is an important step that I think that we, that we all be aware of, and is something that, that may continue on into the future. The other thing that we're starting to hear, and we are monitoring, apologies for the background noise, we are monitoring developments in the project development sector. So that we are seeing some delays, some issues around financing, around, you know, workforce issues in the, in the long-term project pipeline. And so the Public Utilities Commission has been starting to address some of those things and, and brings some of those things to light. It's, it's hard to say at this point how those things will unfold. I think it depends in large part on, on, you know, how long the public health restrictions are in place and, and, you know, if we can get, get our arms around, around this virus and, and start managing it in the downward trajectory. So we'll continue to monitor that. But I, I think it's important for everybody to understand that there are effects on the project development side. And, and, you know, the project development is, in terms of build, actually constructing, permitting and building projects, is something that affects the market for renewables and other types of power. And also is very much a long-term process. And so there could be long-term effects based on what's happening now in that sector. And Kirby may be able to shed some more light on this as well. But that is something that we are starting to see more information about, and we'll certainly monitor that and, and report that up the chain.
Thank you.
If it's appropriate to make a couple of comments, I'll go ahead and do that now, if that's okay with the board?
That'd be, that'd be great.
Fantastic. Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Kirby Dusell with Pacific Energy Advisors. And maybe just piggybacking on some of the comments that Ty has already made, I, I would just like to add that in terms of energy sales, so these are retail sales to residents and businesses, you know, we're, we're gathering information quickly and things are evolving. I'd say, you know, almost day to day in terms of how we're understanding the impacts of the pandemic on electricity usage. Certainly, what we've seen so far are some upward, upward movement in the residential sector, some downward movement, as you might reasonably expect, in the small and medium commercial sectors in particular. We're going to keep our finger on this pulse, you know, for the foreseeable future. And I think one of the nice things that, that SDCP has working for is its launch timing. And, and you'll be able to gather a lot of information between now and when that happens and make adjustments if need be. And so, you know, in the meantime, I think we're just in learning mode, in monitoring mode, and we'll certainly loop out to, to staff and the board in the future with additional information related to, to what we're observing in terms of retail sales. And then just one follow-up comment on the project development side. I do think this is an area where we've definitely seen, as Ty mentioned, some early-stage disruptions in supply chains, as well as municipal planning and permitting departments, some of which are closed. And while some do remain open and continuing to evaluate project opportunities, I wouldn't say things are moving as quickly as they normally do. And we've definitely seen communications between project developers and community choice aggregators regarding concerns about project timeline delays. And so, again, your launch timing relative to the settling out of issues regarding the pandemic, I think, is, is very good in the sense that there's, there's a long enough on-ramp here, if you will, to, to have a lot of these issues settle out, have business as usual normalized to a large extent, and, and to minimize the impacts to this organization as you, as you move forward with your implementation activities. That's all, all I've got.
Yeah, Kirby, thank you very much for the information. I think the, the one I'm worried about, on, the one, what is keeping me up at night on this and talking about SDCP is, is really that business as usual is not going to be business, you know? I mean, so I'm, I'm, and I, I am talking into the, we don't know right now. So that's really the crystal ball thing. So I appreciate it. I just think it, it's something that we really need to be pushing forward to see how this is going to, how this affects all the organizations. And, and I think our timing is good. I agree with you a little bit, but I also think it could be, it could be, it just, we just need to be really on top of where, how it's going to be and, you know, businesses and so on and so forth. So thank you, Kirby. I appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe just one quick follow-up to that, because I, I do think it's, it's related. We have some opportunities as a community choice aggregator to update forecasts that are regularly presented to regulatory agencies. And to the extent that we do feel comfortable in what we've learned about eventual load impacts that may well exist into the future as a result of the pandemic, we'll certainly bake those in. And, and as a result, if sales were expected to go down on a more permanent basis, that could certainly trigger lower costs with various compliance products, whether it's renewable energy, reserve capacity and so forth. And so, you know, your, your point's well taken, and we'll definitely keep an eye on this as closely as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Good, good. Cody, did you want to add anything else?
No, thank you. I'm good.
All right, perfect. Well, thank you, Mark, for those, those questions. And any other board member have any questions or comments? All right, well, let's move to the next item. Next item is item number three, ad hoc subcommittee or ad hoc committee update on, on the CEO recruitment process.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt here.
Yes.
Ms. Hooven may apply for this position. So, so as not to create any appearance of impropriety or conflict of interest, she's going to log off the Zoom meeting. And then I will ask the conclusion of item three, I will message her to log back in for the remaining, remainder of the meeting.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Thank you for letting me know that. So I will start as soon as, let's see that Cody is off then. All right, so she is off, so then I will start. On target. Sorry?
Can everyone else hear clearly?
Now I can. It wasn't, it was, it sounded like.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, let me, can you hear me?
It was the best you sounded all night.
All right, sorry, sorry about that. Well, so I just want to say, there's a report in your, your board packet and on our, our progress on the recruitment of our CEO. In summary, we've made a lot of progress and we are on target. As a reminder, on February 27th, SDCP board appointed me and Vice Chair Padilla to this ad hoc committee. The committee is supported by Sean Marshall from Lean Energy. We are working with Bill Avery from Avery and Associates, an executive recruiter firm with decades of experience in public agency and executive recruitments on this recruitment. Since the last board meeting, the search team and the recruiter have completed the following tasks. We reviewed the recruitment process and updated the timeline. We've completed stakeholder interviews to build a candidate profile. We've completed a CCA CEO salary survey, and we're still looking at some more data points for that. We've completed a digital job posting and posted to a variety of industry sites on April 10th. We've issued a press release to the San Diego Regional Press outlets on April 14th, and I put it all over social media as well. We've done candidate outreach, and that is still underway. We've engaged the City of Encinitas HR Department for help with the appropriate compensation packages and CEO contract and onboarding process. To date, we've received 14 candidate applications. The deadline to apply for our CEO position is May 20th. Like to take a moment to go over several important dates in our timeline moving forward. Mid, and this is in your packet as well, mid-May, early-June, candidate screening for base qualifications, select top 15 to 20 for further vetting, select top six to seven for first round interviews. May 28th, board meeting, SDCP board in closed session to discuss CEO salary range and benefit, benefits options. Week of June 15th, first round of interviews with our top six, 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 seven candidates. Two to three candidates for finalist interviews. June 25th, board meeting, second round interviews with the top two to three candidates with full board in closed session prior to 6:25 board meeting. Week of June 28th, which is the final and third interview, if needed, and candidate selection. By mid-July, finalize CEO compensation package and employment agreement. July 23rd, board meeting, approve CEO hire. And open, August 20th, CEO onboarding process begins. At this time, I want to see if Sean Marshall, if he's on.
Breaking up a tight, no, but covered it well, and, and I don't have anything to add unless there are questions for me. Or for you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, fine. And then just every once in a while, it seems to kind of go, have some odd connectivity. So it's fine right now.
Sorry about that. So, um, so the timeline, I think, is critically important, and that timeline is in your agenda packet. So if you want to take a look at that, it, it just lays out, you know, the next steps and where we're at, and when we, we plan on having a CEO up in, in, to the board. But June, June, July, we'll have the, the final two to three to the board in closed session to, to interview. And then in July, we'll have the, we'll have that item on the agenda for discussion in terms of hire and also compensation package. And then August, we'll have the onboarding starting. Does anybody have any questions?
I got, I have one. I have one question there, Chair Mosca, I'm just.
Board Member West?
Do we need, do, do you need assistance because of a board member Padilla's circumstance? We need to appoint someone in the, in the meantime, or, or, I'm just throwing it out there.
We could, Ryan, time in if, if, if needed here. So what is the process? Steve, Vice Chair Padilla is, is on the subcommittee. We've been sending him updates and information. And Board Member West is saying, if Vice Chair Padilla is going to be out a little bit longer, should, should we try to substitute him? Or can we?
Since the ad hoc subcommittee is designed to, you know, minimize Brown Act issues, my recommendation would be that it stay as is. If he is, considering that he's gotten a lot of this information, if he will be permanently unable to, to rejoin the subcommittee, then I do think it's proper to swap in someone else, if that's okay with you, Board Member West and Chair Mosca.
I'm, I'm, I don't want to. I'm just saying, if, if he's, if he is incapacitated, you know, it's, it's just, he's, he's under a lot of, it's, what he's gone through is really rough. That's all I'm saying. I, I just think we need, check with, check with Board Member Padilla, and then if we need to, we can always figure out something later.
Yeah. And we can, we can take a look at the issue in detail, and if that's the board's desire, we can, we can certainly address it at the next.
Chairman Mosca, wouldn't the, with the Tula Vista alternate step in for the Tula Vista primary in a situation like this?
Mute.
You're on mute.
Did you hear my question?
Yeah, we heard you, Bill. Joe's talking to, Joe's talking to himself right now.
The speaker's not working. I'm on mute. So why don't we do this? We'll reach out to Steve and see what his intention is and whether or not he can continue. I, I think that if he's, if he's going to be permanently out, he has been receiving emails, and he has been keeping up on the emails. If he's going to be permanently out until August, then what I'll do is bring this back and, and, and ask the board for permission to bring Board Member West in.
Hey, Chair Mosca, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Sean Marshall. This would be a good opportunity to also remind the board that there are a number of folks who are involved in the process to round out. They're not, they're not a subcommittee member per se, but once the CAC is seated, the Community Advisory Committee, we do anticipate bringing on a member of that CAC to participate in the initial candidate review and the first round interview. In addition, we have a request in to the CEO of Clean Power Alliance or the COO to, to help with that. We do have the gentleman from Avery and Associates. So it's an excellent question, but I think it also bears reminding that there are a number of other folks who are involved in the process as we go along.
Thank you, Sean. Sean keeps me on task. Sean is a, she's, she's a great support, and she picked up on something that I had not actually said in my, my comments in terms of the folks that are going to be around the table helping us with this. And Sean has helped me do that. And later on, we'll be putting our, our Community Advisory Committee together, and the hope is that the chair or vice chair or somebody from the Community Advisory Committee would be. And the hope is that the chair or vice chair or somebody from the Community Advisory Committee would be with us in, in some of those first interview selection process. And that we probably would have somebody from Clean Power Alliance, the CEO or CEO with us as well. So, good point, good point. Any other questions or comments on this item? Bill, Monica? All right. Well, then let's move to. Let's move to item number five, the all-important and exciting chat about bylaws.
Right, what happened to item four?
So four, we moved down to just before nine because of the relationship between both of them. So you will have a chance to speak to that, and it will be just before nine. But that's, all right, so let's go to number five, and we will wait for Ryan to queue.
Yeah, thank you. I've met Cody, and I believe Nick Norvell is going to go over this item as soon as Cody gets back on.
Perfect.
Standby.
Good evening, board members. Do you want me to wait for Cody to get back on before I start this?
Hi, everybody. I am back on, but Nick.
Oh, great.
This is all for you, so I'll just hand it right over to you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chair and board members. So under SDCP's JPA agreement, the board is authorized to adopt bylaws, policies, and other procedures governing SDCP's operation. And before you this evening, our draft bylaws that our office prepared for review and discussion by the board. Some of the bylaw provisions are, are basic, just restatements of what's in the JPA agreement. Other provisions are intended to supplement items in the JPA agreement or to address topics which were not covered in the JPA agreement. So the bylaws before you include some general provisions concerning SDCP's formation and board structure, board officers in terms of office, board meetings, including provisions on closed session attendance, preparation of agendas, addition of items by board members, public comments, meeting procedures and rules of order, and basic rules of debate and decorum. And the bylaws also include provisions on board committees, including participation of alternate directors, removal of committee members and ad hoc committees. And there are two items I want to specifically point out that are included in the, the draft bylaws before you. First, under the Brown Act, a JPA can choose whether or not to allow alternates to attend closed session meetings when the primary member is absent. Under the draft bylaws before you, this would permit alternates to attend closed session if the primary is absent. One restriction under the Brown Act, however, is that alternates who are not elected officials may not participate in closed session. So that is one limitation that we cannot get around because of the Brown Act. But in general, alternates would be authorized to attend closed sessions with the JPA. The second item is that although closed session information is generally confidential and cannot be disclosed to anyone outside of the closed session, there is an exception in the Brown Act that is narrow and defines the circumstances under which JPA board members can go back and disclose certain types of items to the legislative bodies of their home agency and to the legal counsel for their home agency. And the draft bylaws before you would allow, under those circumstances, the sharing of closed session information as permitted by the Brown Act. So I just wanted to point those out, those are decisions that you, as a JPA, can make whether to allow those, include those provisions in the bylaws, but I wanted to point them out. With regard to the procedures for approval and moving this forward, the JPA agreement requires that member agencies really receive at least 30 days written notice of bylaw adoption or amendments before the board considers it final adoption. So if the board would like to move forward with the bylaws that are presented this evening with or without changes, staff would send a copy to the member agencies and then bring the bylaws back at the next meeting, which is held at least 30 days from the nervous. And so I'm happy to take questions and then receive direction from the board.
All right, any questions for Nick?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I just have a question about section eight. It talks about the consent agenda. I don't know if this is a part of the bylaws that are also included in the JPA, but it says that members of the public can pull a consent item, but it has to be supported by a board member. And I was wondering, is that standard or what the thought, thought process is? I, I know at the city, we allow public to pull, and it's just if they come and pull, that's it, then it's pulled. So I just wanted to see if I'm understanding that right.
Um, that is how it's drafted currently, but of course, it is up to the, the JPA, and it is in your discretion to change that if you'd like.
Okay. It, it's, but that language is in the JPA already?
Um, no, I'm sorry, it's in the, it's in the draft bylaws before you. I don't believe it's in the JPA agreement.
Probably not.
I doubt that it was. It seems pretty specific to have been included in there.
Um, I, I don't, I don't think that would ever be a problem, but just, I don't know how, I, I don't think we should. I don't think the request has to be supported by a board member of the public, if a member of the public wants to pull an item.
I agree. It's, I mean, that's, that's consistent with the practice in my city as well.
And maybe strike that part, just the, the latter part of the sentence, but such request must be supported by a board member?
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I, I'm with you guys. Remove that, that's.
Okay. Okay, so if, if that, that's the only question I had, so I, I'd like to, to move the item. Would that change?
Second, um, okay, I still have a question, but that's okay.
So, go ahead, Bill, you can have it.
So Nick. I'm not sure I 100% followed it. Were you saying that under the Brown Act, if a board member is with, in the SDCP closed session, let me, I can go back and inform my city council and my city attorney about what we discussed in the SDCP closed session?
Under specific circumstances, and I can provide further information on what was.
Nick, were you saying that's inherent in the Brown Act? Or that is something we're permitting under our, these set of bylaws?
It is, it has to be. The JPA has to authorize it either by policy or in its bylaws for you to be able to do that. So it is not inherent in the Brown Act that you would be able to go back and do that unless the JPA has adopted a bylaw or provision allowing you to do so.
And in the bylaws you presented, that is in there?
Yes.
Yeah. I would definitely recommend that. I ran into a situation like that in Sandag where the member before me was part of an important decision closed session, and then I inherited the job. And I said, hey, what happened? And she said, I can't tell you. And I always thought, well, that's pretty inefficient. So yes, I support that.
And this is, this is Ryan, if I may elaborate on that point, because this did come up with other JPAs. And when I was first working with the Clean Power Alliance, and how we handle this typically asks the, the, the member city to go into closed session, and then we send a confidential memo over to the city attorney outlining the issue and just reminding them of that, that bylaw provision in the JPA, so it's clear what's confidential.
Yes, and my point is, we might be switching members as we go along, and we want a system where you can transfer the information.
Right, that, that's allowed in the bylaws.
Yes, so I'm ready to vote for the motion.
So, so Ryan or Nick, we don't need a motion on this, right? It's just to give direction to, it sounds like Board Member Montgomery had one change. And so if you can kind of put that together in the new draft, and then send that off to the cities, and then bring it back on the agenda after the 30 days has, has lapsed. Right? Do you need a motion?
We could go with it without a motion. It sounds like there's consensus and, and a clear direction from the board.
All right.
So Nick, I, we have to docket this at our city council to get approval of this?
No, it's just a, just a requirement that the JPA send notice that this will be considered at an upcoming SDCP meeting.
Okay.
You could docket it or, or could not.
Okay.
In the discretion of your agency.
Okay, so when it comes back, then we'll have a formal vote to approve it.
Correct, and it will require a two-thirds vote to approve.
So it's likely to be on the agenda for the end of May or June meeting?
Correct. It depends if the May meeting is 30 days from now, it's more likely June.
All right. All right. Well, that's, thank you to Bill for writing those, those excellent JP, that excellent JPA agreement, not joking.
You don't want to know how that sausage was made.
All right.
I don't want to know how any sausage is made.
All right, so any other questions or comments on item number five? All right, so it's moving to the member cities with, with the one change there in terms of any member of public can pull a consent calendar with or without approval by a board member. All right, let's move to item number six, and it is review and approval of the procurement policy adoption of resolution number 2020-02, adopting a procurement policy for SDCP, and Cody Hubin will take this.
Great, thank you. And I will kick this off, but this is also another, one of our many policy kind of housekeeping items that, if you recall, we talked about in our February meeting, a series of policies that we'd be bringing forward. As a startup, we have a lot of housekeeping items to take care of that all of our member cities have been building upon for years and years, and this is one of those. So this is a procurement policy that really focuses on adoption of policies that cover professional services, general, sorry, trying to juggle multiple documents on my screen. This is trickier than I thought. And it covers professional services, general services and supplies. So this doesn't really get into the topics that I think a lot of us are interested in around power procurement or local development of power. This is more of a housekeeping item around any professional services contracts. If we're going to do things like buy supplies or sign, you know, a membership dues or a lease for an office space, those types of things. And it also does address that public works policies will be following California state law. And it does mention in here in the staff report that a sustainable workforce policy, as we described previously in the policy matrix, will be coming forward to the board for discussion, and then likely even going to the committees. That's where we'll get into the discussion about local power development and what that type of workforce interest and policy direction from the, from the board is on that topic. I'm going to turn it over to Ryan or Nick to see if they have any other information to add to this item.
Thank you. I'll let Assistant General Counsel Nick Norvell speak on this item, please.
So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has. It's a fairly straightforward procurement policy. What it basically does is sets up a competitive process involving RFPs or RFQs for items over $125,000. For contracts between 50 and $125,000, the policy would require at least three written proposals from potential providers. And then for contracts between $10,000 and $50,000, it would require informal verbal proposals from at least three providers. So it provides a set of competitive procurements for everything over $10,000 with increasing formality as the, the costs get higher. And then finally, the policy would allow sole source procurement only in specific limited circumstances like emergencies, proprietary goods or services that can't be procured otherwise, or compatibility with existing items that are used by SDCP.
All right, well, thank you for that. Nick or Kirby from PEA just had a question in terms of energy power contracts. So is this where we would address energy power contracts in terms of the process for entering into those contracts? Or is there another area? Because I'm, I'm really interested in making sure that when we enter into energy power contracts, that it's as public as possible. I even envision that, that our Community Advisory Committee, which will later set up, may even, that discussion may even be had with them before it actually reaches the board.
This policy would not be for those purposes. In, in section nine, it discusses the, the future adoption of a risk management policy and specifically recognizes that the consideration of purchasing power or energy attributes will take place pursuant to that risk management policy. So that's something you'll see coming forward subsequently.
So within that policy is where we would address. Yes, please.
Sorry, if I could elaborate, yeah, that would normally be covered under a separate risk management delegation. And those are usually based on notional amounts of the energy contract or megawatt hours or term or price, depending on how it's set up. And that's usually, you know, prepared by the portfolio manager and staff and reviewed by council. So that will be a separate apart from this, which really governs, you know, the procurement of widgets, services, public works, your sort of run-of-the-mill type services.
So the, the risk, energy risk policy will come to us, and we'll, we'll, the board will be able to discuss that instead of the policy and process of how those contracts would go forward.
Yeah, that, that's actually one of the items that we have teed up for, for the next couple of months, I'd say. Probably starting to work on that as soon as about a week or two from now. So we should have a draft ready to roll and, and for staff's review in the not-too-distant future, and then bringing that to the board thereafter. And I think that document will provide a lot of clarity about, you know, energy contracting, how that's going to work. And then, you know, clearly, you all will be able to set whatever parameters make sense to you and feel, you know, you feel as, that they are appropriate for that, those sorts of transactions.
Perfect. All right. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions or comments?
I do, Chair.
Sure. Board Member Marie?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to ask what went into the, the thought process behind the the bonus, the 2.5 points out of 100 points for firms that we may contract with that support diversity? That seems a little low, and so I'm just wondering what went behind that.
And this is Cody, I could chime in, and I will, I will hand it over to Nick, but this is a starting point. We're, we're open to discussions and input from the, the board before we adopt this policy. So we're, we're open to changes. And I could let Nick speak to where the template for this document came from.
Yes. The basis for this document was the procurement policy of another CCA, and they had used a similar amount in theirs of, of the 5%, 2.5%. And I believe, and Cody may be able to speak to this, we've been including similar requirements and at least some of the RFPs that have already been issued. I can't remember the exact amounts that were in those, but they were fairly similar to this. But it is in the board's discretion to increase those amounts. I will say, it's typical approximate not to exceed 5% for a preference like this. But it is in the discretion of the board to go higher than what's in here currently.
I just feel like if, if, if we are trying to encourage it and it's bonus points, then it should be a little bit higher than that. I know that one of the main reasons why I was excited about serving on this board is that we could start from a ground level and kind of give a message that we want to be inclusive as possible. And so I think I, I would, I would ask my colleagues to entertain moving up to 5% because it just, it, it doesn't seem like much of an incentive to be diverse. And I can, you know, we've been at a few conferences, and we, we're just, we need to try to work really hard to diversify this space. And I think starting there would be a good, would be a good start.
If, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. But before we entered, before we go to the motion, any other questions? Nick, I do, out of curiosity, what CC did or CCA did you, did that language come from?
Um, the structure of this and this provision was from East Bay Community Power, I believe.
Oh, it was, all right.
That's surprising me that, you know what I mean? I, I was thinking, I was thinking something completely opposite, but that's great, yeah.
All right. Mark, did you have any questions or comments?
No, your beard looks great, that's all.
Chair, I just have one last thing about, just throwing out there how we would, any audit or reporting provisions, we can build on that, I think, later, but I think that's also important as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. So we have a motion and a second by Board Member Baber. So let's vote.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
I believe there's a, there was a public comment submitted for this item.
There is, yes.
Sorry, Sebastian. Did I, did I fail to, whenever you want, all right, so let's, we didn't read any comments, if there were any comments received.
No, the, the first comment is for item six.
Perfect. I, I intended this. This, this was meant.
So it's one comment from Jason Anderson, and he writes that he supports the adoption of the resolution.
All right, perfect. No other comments on item number six. All right. Well, let's move to vote. Megan?
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. Well, let's move to item number seven, review and approve policy on delegation of authority to CEO for regulatory and legislative matters. Cody Hubin?
Okay, thank you. And I'll get my next staff report. So this is an action to adopt a resolution and a policy delegating authority to myself currently and eventually the CEO to take positions on regulatory and legislative items when certain conditions are met. And this is yet another housekeeping item. So as you know, we've been very actively engaged in both regulatory and some legislative activities. And this allows us to continue to do so and kind of formalizes that activity. And as Board Member Montgomery was saying, allows us to build this from the ground up. I was thinking we're building the plane while we're flying it. But this allows us to delegate that authority to me because these items do move very quick. And the policy discusses several criteria in which this is allowable. And it's primarily focused on when we're engaging consistent with San Diego Community Power's mission and operational interests, which is obviously what we're doing. And a lot of that is very well documented in the joint powers authority agreement and, and just general discussion from the board, which obviously I'm very attuned to. It talks about timing as well. These items, excuse me, at the regulatory level often move very quick and require a lot of activity and engagement and various filings. And so there's often time constraints. And it's also when we have essentially assessed other positions of similarly minded organizations, like trade organizations such as Cal CCA, and local legislators, or even member agencies to see if they have taken positions on some of the items that we're talking about. It's also when I'm concurrent with the chair or the vice chair and checking in if the item seems substantial or if bringing it to the board, if it is substantial, is not possible before some sort of deadline. And of course, updating the full board on any actions that we are taking, which we have already been doing through the operations and administration report, and where we have a regulatory update attached. So you'll see there's an attachment, a resolution, and in the policy itself. And, and that's the extent of this item. So the action is to adopt the resolution and the policy. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for staff? Comments?
It's Bill. This generally works when an organization has a clear sense of priorities. And, you know, if, if an organization sets out, here are the eight things we care about, and we're, we're going to fight for them. The CEO doesn't have to check in with us on if item, you know, if, if the thing we value number six pops up, the CEO knows, move on it because we've already stated that. So are, are we going to? How do we state those principles? Will we do that in our regulatory subcommittee? Or how do we set sort of the, 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 the goals for this so that who's ever executing this plan will know how to, will know the values, and then they can work up the details? Do you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, no, I understand. This was a, a question that I had of Cody early on, but I, I think that I was, I, I am comfortable with what we have before us. You know, it's different with, from, you know, in a city, when the city is dealing with a plethora of different issues. With our CCA, I think that our values are, are enshrined in our JPA. And, and it's, it's pretty much what we've been talking about. But I do think, I do envision that we are going to have a strategic planning session where we're going to develop a mission statement, and we're going to develop more goals and, and different, different statements that, that we can, values that we can put down that will also be guidance to our CEO on these matters.
And Board Member Baber, if I could add on to that, too, we do have a very pretty well, and I think you were present for it, a pretty well-defined set of values and directives in our joint powers authority agreement. And because we are kind of singularly focused in the, in a sector, and that's been very helpful in aligning our mission. And it's, it's pretty clear, but I think you're referring to something like a legislative platform, which a lot of our cities have as well.
Yes, I, I sort of lost track. Do we have a regulatory subcommittee set up?
We do not yet.
Okay. And that would be another place. The, the regulatory subcommittee would probably be slightly more alert to it than, say, the general board member, because that's in their, their subject matter jurisdiction we've delegated to them.
It may, yes, and it may also play out in, in the Finance and Risk Committee, of which currently La Mesa is a member. Because a lot of the impacts from, at least in the regulatory environment, which is slightly different than legislative activity, is often, we engage on it because it could be a risk to our business. So that, that would be a good place for it as well.
Yes, it, the, what, the best organizations, everybody agrees at the top, the values. And then there's a subcommittee that sort of executes some of the strategic operations of it. And then underneath that, there's staff who's basically executing at the tactical level based on the two levels above that explain it. And then it works great. But when you break down one of those sections, people at the top don't know where they're doing. The subcommittees are asleep at the switch, or the staff goes rogue, it starts to break apart.
So maybe if I could suggest something, maybe we provide these updates to the Finance and Risk Management Committee for now, until we have the bandwidth to form another committee. I mean, I think that'd be a fantastic place to have some of these deeper discussions.
Okay.
Also, Bill, if you want to take a look at our, our timeline in terms of, of having a strategic planning session where we can
It sounded like you broke up, Joe. Is that just me?
No, he did.
So, so, sorry, sorry, my speakers, there's something wrong with it. But I was just saying, let's look at the timeline, too, and see if, you know, when we've scheduled the, the strategic planning session, whether that's a, that's a good time to have that, that, because that would be when we're putting the mission statement together and the values. Did you hear me?
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
All right. All right. Any other questions for staff? Then I would entertain a motion on item number seven.
Second.
Sorry, I'm sorry, did, who moved it?
I'll move it.
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
All right. And then we had a second by Board Member West?
Yeah, but I'm having a little bit of a problem right now. But can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. So when you seconded it, I thought somebody else moved it. I'm like, did I not hear that?
Okay, yeah, my computer just did some crazy stuff, so I'm all good now.
All right. So we have a motion by Board Member Montgomery and a second by Board Member West, and we will move to vote. Megan, you're on mute.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. Well, let's move to item number eight, approval of conflict of interest code for San Diego Community Power. Is this also you, Cody?
I'm going to hand this right off to our General Counsel.
All right, Ryan.
Thank you. Mr. Norvell, I'm punting this as well.
Well, Nick is definitely getting, doing a lot of work here.
Somebody, somebody catch him.
Do the work to do the presentations, if that's okay.
Board members, this item is for the adoption of a conflict of interest code for SDCP. As you may be familiar with from your home agencies, under the Political Reform Act, every public agency in California is required to adopt a conflict of interest code, which identifies the officials and employees who may be involved in making contracts and making other decisions that could involve financial impacts. So the purpose of this is basically to designate individuals who need to file financial disclosure forms, what are commonly called Form 700s or Statements of Economic Interests. And the, the proposed code designates the positions, including consultants, who would make or participate in making decisions on behalf of SDCP that could affect, affect a financial interest. The code before the board this evening is the standard code that's adopted by regulations of the Fair Political Practices Commission. Because SDCP is still new, the proposed code only identifies a handful of positions that were identified in the JPA agreement and the staffing plan of SDCP. As positions are added to the agency, persons in those positions would be required to file a Form 700, and the code would be amended in the future to include those provisions. But in general, this code is required to be adopted within the first few months of the agency's existence, and thus the reason we're bringing it for you tonight. So the recommended action is to adopt resolution 2020-04, adopting a conflict of interest code, and authorizing staff to execute the appropriate documents and submit the code to the San Diego County Board of Supervisors, which is the code reviewing body, and to request approval by the Board of Supervisors under Government Code Section 87303.
Thank you, Nick. Any questions for Nick or a motion?
I, I have a question for you, Nick. So just for the public who's watching, let me ask you the hypothetical. The, the code would require every, all the voting members in the alternate to file, right?
Yes.
And it would require our top-level staff. I don't know how deep you go into the staff ranks, but certain, but.
That's correct.
Okay. And then our outside consultants, which have a important function, let's say the position of, that PEA is in their position that, I don't know, maybe Sean's in, are they filing too, under, under your draft model?
They, if, if they will be, and as the, the consultants that you mentioned likely will be affecting decisions of the agency that could have financial impacts on people, then they would be required to file a Form 700.
Okay. And then, for example, Ty, would he fall in, under the way you interpret, would Ty fall under it?
I'd have to say. I have to put you on the spot, Nick.
No. I would have to take a closer look at it. I'm not, I'm not certain.
Probably, okay. Well, I'm just.
Generally, special counsel does not fall under these conflict of interest codes. And so typically, like, special counsel in our firm would not file a conflict of interest.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Generally, it's individuals who provide, have an ongoing relationship and essentially function in the, in the same way that a staff member does.
Got it. Okay. No, that, that makes sense. I'm just, I'm trying to translate this for the public. What, what do these things mean? They mean anyone who would have a authority to influence a financial decision of the SDCP would have, would be filing their disclosures to show if they have any conflicts of interest, so the public looking could make their own judgment as to whether their decisions are biased or not. And so I 100% support that. I'm, I'll move the item.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So moved. Board Member West.
All right. And so, but Ryan or Nick, this is just standard language, right? I mean, there's, to the extent that we've included names and, and positions, other than that, it's just standard language.
That's correct.
All right, perfect. So we have a motion. We have a motion and a second, and Megan will call the roll.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. Now we're going to go back to the item that Board Member Baber was anxious to get to. Okay. Did I break out? Yes. Item number five. We're going to go back to item number five, review of the San Diego Community, I'm sorry.
I was four.
Four.
Four. Or, or we're going to go to four, Report from Finance and Risk Management Committee. And I will call on Cody Hubin and then to the Chair of that committee.
Great, thank you. And I will kick it off and then turn it over to Board Member Baber. We held our first Finance and Risk Management Committee last Friday and discussed two items. So this is a report out of those two items. The first was the banking and credit agreements, which are on the agenda for tonight. And I will save the detail because we will go into that, I think, believe in the next item. But the short summary is the committee recommended for the board to approve these banking and credit agreements. The second item was a discussion and general direction to staff on rate discount power content and the phasing plan for customer rollout or customer phasing of when we launch our program. And just briefly, the board did, excuse me, the committee provided consent and general direction on the phasing plan and directed us, staff and Pacific Energy Advisors, essentially to, to do a lot more work on rate discount power content and those types of things. We don't actually need any decisions yet from the board on those items. And it's a little bit too soon for us to really need that, but we wanted to start those discussions. And we got really way deep in the discussion and the technical space and wanted to do some more work with the committee and with the full board on, on what that means and, and provide more information as we go out to market. And so I will hand it over to Board Member Baber to say anything. And we do have Pacific Energy Advisors on the line again to remind you, per reduce sales here if you have any specific question.
No, I don't have anything to add to it. That's, that's, Cody gave a good summary of what happened.
All right, perfect, perfect. Well, let's move on to item number nine, which is the approval of agreements with River City Bank in Emerald Blue for credit and banking services. And I say yay, thank you, Cody, for all of the hard work and all of our staff and all of our consultants and to our attorneys, everybody, for, for putting this all together. I know it's been a huge task, and this is an important, such an important task for us. Obviously, we can't do anything without funding. And so, so let me turn this over to you, Cody, and give us more details.
Thank you. And again, on this report, I have, you can see listed on the staff report, I have two other folks joining us who are on the line as well. Mike Berwenger is with PFM Financial Advisors, and Glenn Price is a part of BB&amp;K Law, which is our General Counsel firm, and his expertise is in probably many things, but including negotiation of financing documents, and stellar on this topic. One housekeeping item I want to point out is the recommendations are described here in the staff report. They've been slightly updated from the agenda items. So whoever, if a board member is going to make a motion on this item, please review those recommendations in the staff report. So a little bit of background on this item, and this is a pretty substantial item. And if I thought negotiating the formation of a joint powers authority was a lot of work and tricky, finalizing financing has been just, just as, as much so. And so we retained Pacific Financial Management, the financial advisor firm, actually back in March of 2019, to really advise us on this whole process of going out to, with us for proposals to the banking industry to see who can fund the startup and initial operational financing for our CCA and just kind of guide us through that process. And we were really lucky to reach, obtain PFM and specifically Mike, who has experience doing this for other CCAs across the state of California, which is, as you all know, it's, there's some experience here, but we were lucky to get one of the few people that has done this before. So we, we issued an RFP to the banking industry and, and received a series of the proposals. And back in December, the board directed us to pursue negotiations with River City Bank for a credit facility and banking services for both our startup and operational financing and also our banking needs. And the RFP that we put out initially sought a $40 million loan, however. And the RFP that we put out initially sought a $40 million loan, however, we updated our, our most recent pro forma, it was determined that our credit facility was only necessary to go up to $30 to $35 million, based on extensive analysis of what we would need. Long story short, after extensive negotiations, we, terms were agreed to with River City Bank, and we worked with BB&amp;K and Glenn Price, who's also on the line here, to review and finalize the agreements. One change that happened is when we put this RFP out on the street, we had said our member cities do not want to provide collateral. So often, when CCA's launched, the local governments will put in money to provide collateral or some sort of assurance to the loans that you're getting to the bank. And we didn't want to do that in the midst of these negotiations when COVID-19 struck, at least for the city of San Diego, and I'm sure for our other member cities, providing collateral became even less of an, of an option from the member cities. And so when River City was doing their own analysis and looking at their documents, they came back to us and said we'd be much more comfortable with you providing collateral just for the $5 million initial startup amount. And rather than going back to member cities, we actually worked with a local lender, and he's just a local private investor, the fund name is Emerald Blue LLC, and you'll see that listed in the staff report. And very motivated to support climate change in general and invest in renewable energy, and really just wants to see the community choice program succeed in San Diego, and very generously offered to step up and provide the $5 million collateral. So I feel like months of effort are being summarized in just a few minutes, but I would actually like to pause there and, and allow Mike, if he has anything to say, to share some of the information, but also Glenn Price can do a lot of the details of the agreement. You have a pretty lengthy agreement in front of you today to discuss this credit terms between San Diego Community Power, SDCP, and River City Bank, and also a secondary promissory note between us and Emerald Blue for the $5 million collateral. So I'll pause there, and actually, Glenn, if it's okay, I'll start with you, and then, Mike, you could chime in on anything else you need to add here, and I was a little bit awkward on a remote call to coordinate that, but I'll stop there.
Okay, this is Glenn Price. I'm a partner at Bestest &amp; Krieger, and I'm joining you by phone because I'm having some internet issues, so I didn't want to take a risk on blanking out on you in the middle of the conversation. So to summarize the credit agreement with River City Bank and give you some of the high points, it's a two-year revolving credit facility. It goes from $5 million for initial startup costs up to a total of $35 million in aggregate to support other uses that I'll talk about in a minute. At the end of the two-year revolving credit facility, the Community Power has the ability to convert the loan to a term loan that's payable up to 60 months for five years, or to go ahead and pay it off. That'll be a decision that the agency can make at that time. The proceeds from the loan can be used essentially for three things. One's working capital for kind of pre and post-operational commitments for power procurement and for letters of credit and credit support. And what the letters of credit are often used for is to provide collateral to power providers so that they have assurance that they will be paid with respect to energy that's provided to the agency. The initial startup facility is $5 million, and it'll stay at $5 million until we get to the point of an actual successful launch of the Phase 1 for the residential customers. At that point, it jumps up to $25 million, and then at the point where we have the commercial launch, it goes up to $35 million. The facility is subject to financial covenants that the agency will have to meet throughout the term of the loan, and those have been kind of carefully negotiated. They will, well, they actually are still under final negotiation. We're not completely done with that yet, but we're substantially done. They're still tweaking it based on the latest pro forma information. So that's one thing that we will be, go ahead and finalizing over the next few days. The collateral for the loan is, there's a reserve account where 10% of each advance that's taken by the agency is going to be set aside in a reserve account for the bank. There's also the $5 million cash collateral account, which Emerald Blue is providing the, the cash to, to fund that. And also, the bank will have a first priority security interest in the accounts and revenue of the agency. So that's the collateral, collateral that River City Bank will have for the loan. Before I move on to Emerald Blue, maybe we can stop and see if anyone has any questions on the River City credit agreement.
I got a question there, Chair Mosca.
Yes.
Yeah. So would you walk me through timeline for the loan one more time? I should have caught this during our finance committee, but it, it just kind of put the hairs on my neck on, on a little bit. So could you walk through that one more time?
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed what you were, which part you wanted me to go through.
Yeah, the timeline for the, the loan, you broke it down into...
Right.
It's going to go to resident, you know, it's going to go each step, and I just want to make sure that that matches how our, our funding, how we expect it to be executed as well.
Yeah, sure. Once we sign the agreement, $5 million will become available for pre-operational expenses. That will be the, the limit of the credit line up until the point where we do the Phase 1 launch. That's anticipated, I believe, at the end of March 2021. Then it steps up with an additional $20 million to $25 million in the credit line. At the Phase 2 launch, which is the commercial launch, which I believe is three months later in June, it then steps up an additional $10 million to provide the full $35 million in financing.
Okay, nope, you, perfect. Answer my question. Thank you.
I want to chime in really quickly because we also have, of course, the bank is represented on the line, so Rosa Kuchich is on the line, and I see that she's raised her hand. So I don't know if she wants to speak now or later, but I just wanted to point it out to you, Chair.
Sorry, I didn't, I'll recognize Rosa. I didn't see her hand raised. Sorry about that.
Hi, hi, Cody and, and the board. I was just going to chime in and answer your, your question, Board Member West, but Glenn Price did, did an excellent job of explaining the timeline, so thank you.
Well, I didn't know you were on the line too, but I just want to, I want to thank River City Bank because you guys are, I'm thinking about changing my bank and just going with you guys, because with you guys getting rid of all of your, making that on-the-spot decision to, to divest from, from fossil fuel companies was a, was a great step forward and makes me, makes me a happy man, to say the least.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that comment. We're certainly committed to clean energy. I manage our clean energy division. We've been involved with CCAs from the get-go. 10 years ago, we funded Marin Clean Energy with a very similar set of circumstances, where there were community members within Marin County that stepped up to provide some additional collateral. So I really acknowledge Emerald Blue for, for supporting the community and working with us. And also, just, you, you guys are really a great team. Cody's been fantastic to work with, and she, she wasn't, she wasn't lying when she said the financing of the particular agreement and the CCA has been challenging. This has probably been the most challenging one, just based on timelines and certain changes, and so that I think this is a really monumental milestone or crossroad, perhaps, and on behalf of River City Bank and myself personally, we're very excited to be working with you guys and helping you launch SDCP and make San Diego a greener place.
Thank you, Rosa.
Chair, I just have a clarification question, and I also wanted to say thank you to Rosa.
Sure.
I have a question for Glenn just real quick. You mentioned the collateral. Could you just line that up for me again?
Sure. There's three sources of collateral that are being provided for River City Bank. The first is a reserve account, which is fairly common with commercial-type lending. And what that is, is on each advance that's made to the agency, 10% of that advance will go into a reserve account and will be held as collateral for the loan. So if we borrow $500,000, $450,000 will come out to the agency, the other 50 will go into the reserve account. There's also a cash collateral account, which is what Emerald Blue is providing the funding for, which is $5 million. That's going to sit in an interest-bearing account to collateralize this initial pre-operational funding, which tends to be a much riskier component for the lender, as the agency doesn't have any revenue at that point. So that's being collateralized through the cash collateral account. The cash collateral account does get released at a certain point after we've commenced operations and met certain financial goals. And at that point, the River City Bank will release the $5 million, and that will go back to repay Emerald Blue. The last form of security is the, the bank is getting a first priority security interest, a senior interest in our accounts and our revenue that comes in from customers. So that will ensure that as money comes in, that the bank will be repaid its debt service. The, the only caveat to that is we will likely have a lockbox account that's going to go above that, and that'll be brought before the board at a later date when we start working with power providers. And what the lockbox does is the revenue goes into that lockbox first to pay the power providers and the independent system operator for California, and then the money that's left goes into the operating account, and that's the account that River City Bank has a security interest in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Right, Glenn, do you want to continue with, did you have more in your presentation?
Yeah, just really quickly, the Emerald Blue loan obviously is quite a bit simpler in, in legal terms, a couple pages instead of 60. Emerald Blue has been very accommodating in terms of the terms to provide the $5 million for the cash collateral account. They will be repaid at such time as the, the relief conditions are met, and River City Bank will let go of that collateral, and it'll go back to Emerald Blue to pay their principal. We will also be making interest payments that commence once there's been a successful launch of Phase 1. And the collateral account itself is going to earn interest. It's going to be in an interest-bearing account, and that interest will also be released to Emerald Blue, Emerald Blue, excuse me, from River City Bank. The Emerald Blue has also had to subordinate its loan to River City Bank's loan. So if the agency was not to meet the financial targets that allowed that release of collateral from the cash collateral account, then Emerald Blue is going to have to wait to get repaid their $5 million until the River City Bank loan is paid. So I think that, you know, definitely gratitude needs to go out for Emerald Blue to be willing to take that risk and, and potentially have to wait to get their funds repaid.
Right. Let's go to any, any other more, any, Cody, any additional information in this presentation?
I just wanted to add two things. One, representative from Emerald Blue, the fund manager, Tara Hammett, is on the line, so in case she has anything to add, or she's hearing all these notes of appreciation. And then also, Mike Berwinger, if you want to say anything, you were kind of here from the, the get-go of negotiating these agreements and, and just the, going out to bid from the get-go. If you have anything to add, I just wanted to give you a moment to chime in here.
Sure, thanks, Cody. Yeah, I, you know, I think it's been really well-covered. I think, you know, you know, the change with the ad of the collateral is really the only change requested from my River City over the last few months, since we were, you know, we were in front of you in December. You know, I think that's, that's pretty remarkable, given, you know, what's happened over the last month, the financial market's getting turned on its head. I think I'd like to recognize, Cody, you all should be aware just how hard she worked this over the last several weeks. I, I would recommend everybody hire her to renegotiate your mortgage rate. I've not seen somebody in her position work it quite as hard in quite some time, so I think you should all be, you should all be thankful for that, and I think with that, I'll just say, congrats.
That's not why I passed the, the mic, so to speak, over to you.
Well, I...
Go ahead.
Could I say something?
Sure.
So I think, Cody, obviously, your, your hard work is well, is well noted, but I also want to really thank Emerald Blue and all, the entire Business for Good organization, and your commitment to our, to our county and to clean energy is, is, well, it's, it's known by the city, by all of us in many ways, so I really appreciate it, and I look forward to doing more stuff with you.
So I think Tara, Tara, or is, is there a representative from Emerald Blue on the line, or Tara, or did anybody want to say anything from Emerald Blue?
I'm here representing Emerald Blue, but I think everyone has covered it. Happy to help make this BCE operational next year. Thank you all for your hard work to make it happen.
All right, thank you, Tara. Let's go to Megan. Do we have any public comment on this item, or on item number five?
No, we, the next item that we have public comment on is 10 and 12.
All right, chime in if I don't remember that, sorry. All right, perfect. Well, let's bring it back to the board, and...
Then I would move our subcommittee statement to recommend these, these two contracts.
So we want, do we want to be, for the motion maker, do we want to be very specific so that there's no confusion? Did we want to specifically indicate that it's the staff report recommendations?
Cody, you had said that the, there was a change that we had to factor that in. Do you want to restate what that change is?
That's right. It's, it's what Chair Mosca is saying. The staff report recommended actions are a little bit updated and a little bit more crisp on the action, so I recommend if you're going to move this forward, it reflects those two action items that are documented in the staff report.
Okay, in the update of staff report.
Yeah, and this is, this is Glenn. If I apologize for interrupting, but we do also have a formal resolution that was requested by River City just for their purposes with the loan documentation, so we should also reference that formal resolution that puts, that puts the recommended actions into a written resolution form.
Okay, so do we need, Ryan, do we need to make this, like, have a motion on 1A and then a separate motion on 1B?
No, you can combine them. Just if you make the motion based on the recommended actions in the staff report and including the adoption of the resolution, that's sufficient.
Okay.
Because that way, it will reflect that, and River City will get what it needs for its execution authority.
Okay, that's the motion then.
And I second.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and we will vote.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
All right. It feels good to have that done.
Sure.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for every, everything, every bit of effort and energy that you've put into it. Thank you. All right, let's move into, move on to item number 10, which is another important item, Approval of Agreement with Calpine Energy Solutions for Data Management and Customer Call Center Services. And I believe our interim director, Executive Director Cody Hoobin, will be taking this.
Great, thank you. And thank you for that previous action. That is a big weight lifted. So the item number 10 is an agreement with Calpine Energy Solutions for Data Management and Customer Call Center Services, yet another RFP that we issued. And you see here in the staff report, we do describe the scope of work that we were seeking. So this is, we talk a lot about this, but I want to make sure that folks understand what the work is, and we do have, again, representatives from Calpine here to speak a little bit further if you have any questions or need any clarifications. And what we were seeking was generally four task areas, including managing San Diego Community Power customer account data. So there is a massive amounts of data exchange between San Diego Community Power and a variety of other sources, primarily San Diego Gas and Electric. And this management of this data and exchanging customer usage and billing and pay, payment data between them is, is a pretty significant workload and a really important part of our business. And also, working with... And also working with our customers and responding to customer service calls and addressing any sort of customer service issues. That was the general outlay of the RFP that we issued in March, and we had five bidders that submitted proposals to this by April 1st. And we, based on scoring, we had several folks scoring these proposals, myself, as well as Chad Colton on my team, I believe, on this call, and Sam Kong, who's with Pacific Energy Advisors, and John Valesi as well with Pacific Energy Advisors. We also invited Tiffany Law, who's the Director of Finance and Administrative Services that moderate a community power. We wanted, with our other RFPs, we wanted to get another experienced CCA perspective on selection of this important service. We had two bidders, as I mentioned, that we decided to interview, and that was Calpine Solutions and also another firm called GridX. Well, both in the evaluation of the proposal itself and in their interview. They provide, in addition to the core functions that we are seeking of all the data management and the customer service center management, they provided a lot of, I called them wraparound services or additional support that we were seeking, and some things that we didn't even know were of interest, but we left open a space in the RFP to provide additional value-added services. And then we've listed this here in the staff report. So they, I'll just summarize a few of them here. They are interested in willing to operate a union-friendly and locally-based customer call center. They also have brought on a firm that called Sea Change Institute that does data-backed analytics and manages customer opt-out. So they will really help us think about how to message and manage customers when we launch to ensure that we lose, we don't lose any customers. And that really, as you can imagine, that translates into revenue retained. It's a really significant part of when you're launching your service. They also thought about engagement in the community and really heard from San Diego Community Power board members that community is really important to them and what the community is interested in. And they brought on both Clean Tech San Diego and also Urban Sustainability Coalition from the business and the community perspective to help engage folks as we launch our services and engage the community in what we're doing in the business sector as well. They also, one of the more important technical components of this, Calpine is the only firm that is actively beta-testing San Diego Gas and Electric's new Envision system, the new customer management system I mentioned earlier. This is going to be a critical component of our launch and potentially a critical issue that we need to work through, and Calpine is the only firm in the state that is actually experienced in working with SDG on this system. So that was really important to us as well. They also offered a community give-back, so a percentage of their revenue they will put into, set aside, and allow us to invest back in our communities as we see fit. It was initially 2%, and we asked them to increase that up to 3%, and they agreed readily. And then finally, they agreed to waive any payments until February, about February of '21, which translates into about $2 million worth of services. And so as a startup, looking at every dollar we spend, this was an additional value that we provided, that we felt was provided by them. And they just have vast experience. They serve 17 CCAs in the state. They really refined their data management system and constantly look to improve. And we just felt that in the size that we are and the success that we're seeking, that they'd be a really valuable partner. And maybe lastly, the benefit I'll mention is that they're also a local firm. So I think they are hopefully particularly invested in our success as their hometown CCA. So you will see contract documents attached. We have an agreement with them and also a scope of services attached. And I will pause there. Josh Brock with Calpine is on the line. I'll turn it over to him to say a few words, and then if our general counsel or anybody else has anything to add, please feel free. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. I have to do that check every time I'm in a meeting at this point. Yeah, I just want to pass on my appreciation and excitement for the opportunity to partner with you on this historic launch, and definitely wanted to reiterate what Cody said, that we are, we're more than committed. We've, you know, for a decade now, just down the street in downtown San Diego, you know, the core of, the core operations for a number of CCAs has been taking place. And we've dreamed about the day to be able to provide the services in our hometown to our own community members. And we're just really excited that the day has arrived and that we've got the chance to be a part of this undertaking. So thank you for that, and hopefully you've had a chance to review everything that we put together. We've thought a lot about, both as providers in the space, but also as members of this community, but what we would like to see, and we're trying to reflect that in our proposal. So here to answer any of your questions, and appreciate everything that you guys do.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you, Cody. Any questions for Josh or Cody on this item? How do we, I do have a question. How do we come up with the level of people that would get the call center? And it would be there? How do we come up with that? Is that some standard procedure? Is that how it works for other CCAs? Is there some sort of mathematical formula in terms of how many customers you have?
Just Chair Moscow, I apologize. I lost you just for a second there, but to make sure I understood the question you're asking, how did we come to the formula of how many agents are staffing the call center? Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so it is somewhat formulaic. Because we currently support 17 CCAs, we do have a very complex modeling that we've gone through that helps us understand and predict fairly well around what peak volume's going to look like. What you'll see in the contract is San Diego Community Power has contemplated certain service levels associated with the call center in terms of how quickly calls could be answered and those sort of things. And that, what, those are put into the model, and that drives the number of agents that we'll need in order to meet those service levels, as well as provide the proper level and quality of service that we expect when serving the residents.
So Cody and Josh, you're comfortable with the number of people that we would have at this point?
Yes, and I'll note on our end is that it's fluid. So the modeling is really just contemplated around the current size of your CCA. If you add more members, then that, those, the number of agents would change. And once again, it comes down to our ability to meet the service levels that you require. So if we need more agents, we will hire more agents to make sure that we're meeting those service levels. All those costs are borne by our agency as part of our service to you.
Perfect. All right, I think we have one public comment on this item, so let's go to the public comment on this item.
We have a public comment from Jason Anderson, and he writes that he supports the approval of this item.
All right, well, let's bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments for Josh or Cody? Mr. West?
I have a question. I may have a comment. So Josh, please take back to Calpine. I mean, I am, besides you guys being probably the most experienced and qualified to really help us launch in this particular area, I'm really honored that you guys thought through this to really want to help our communities. Is, you know, being the probably the least affluent community out of all of them, IB, when you decided to give 3% back to each one of our communities meant a lot to me because it's something that I have talked with my community is, this is a way we can use energy to help people who don't have the access that they've lacked in the past. This is a way that we can give back to them. So Josh, it's really important to me, and I love that you're working with Clean Tech and urban sustainability. I am really excited that you guys have come along on this journey with us because I think it's a match really made for all of us with San Diego. Is there really going to be the benefit? Thank you.
And thank you, Board Member West. We're really excited, and especially to give back as well. This is, these are all our community as well, and it's a privilege and honor to be able to give back to them in this way.
Any other questions or comments? I don't see any other hands raised.
I would just like to concur. That's all. This is, this is Monica Montgomery. I just, I just would like to confer with that and just say thank you for adding that as a component and really, when asked to increase your level of commitment to the community, you all did. So thank you so much, and I really look forward to this partnership.
Yes, absolutely. And I look forward to working with you, Josh. I'm thankful that you'll be our representative with Calpine as well, so thank you. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll move the item. It's Bill, and thank you, Josh.
Second.
Who is the second?
Board Member West.
All right. All right, let's go to vote.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all council members voting yes.
Great, all right, perfect. Another big item off our list of to-dos. So let's move to, exactly. Let's move to item number 11, approval of our CCA registration and bond agreement, another important one. And I will have our interim CEO take this up.
Thank you. Checking myself unmute. Okay, this is another, it seems it's very important, and it's just kind of standard process that we have to file a registration packet with the California Public Utilities Commission, CPUC. We did actually, excuse me, file for an extension for this, primarily because it also requires a posting of a $100,000 bond, which is essentially a check we send to the California Public Utilities Commission. We did want to refine item number two because that posting could come from us directly or from River City Bank. So just a slight revision to that item. And again, this is standard process, and we did file for an extension. So all of our paperwork, we anticipate pending this board action to be submitted to the CPC within the next probably seven days. And then the bond will be posted shortly thereafter. I don't, I won't belabor this issue and read the details to you, but really, the essential gist of this is it governs the relationship between the CCA program and the utility, which is SDG. A ready, a toy process and kind of form documents that need to be filed. And so I'll stop there and allow if there's any additional comments from council or from the board, if you have any questions.
Perfect. Any questions on item number 11? Comments? Do we have, Megan, do we have any public comment on item 11? No comment. All right, let's bring it back to the board. I will move approval of item number 11.
And I will second.
All right, we have a second.
And for purposes of the motion, just so it's clear to the clerk that it's based on the recommendations in the staff report, not on the agenda, which is 11B to authorize the interim to post the bond.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Ryan.
Board Member Baber, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board Member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
And let's go to our last item on the open session agenda, which is item number 12, approval of the Community Advisory Committee. And I've been waiting for this. It's important that I think it's...
You cut out a bit. I don't, I'm expecting to be handed the mic, so to speak. I'm not sure if that just happened.
Oh, sorry about that. I guess I have to, like, put my face right next to the computer and speak because I think my speaker keeps on going in and out. So item 12, approval of the Community Advisory Committee. And I was just saying, hopefully it went through. I was just saying how important I think that this item is, and I've been looking forward to it because, you know, not only is it in our JPA agreement, but it's also another way for us to stay connected to our communities by putting, by nominating residents to serve on this. They are voices in the community again, and they're also helping us with our tasks. So I'm excited about this item and getting this group up and running. So Cody, did you want to cue this up?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, thank you. And so our last item of the public agenda that I'm also very excited for, so the board, if you recall, the action here, actually, I'll start with that, is to approve nominees from each member city to the inaugural Community Advisory Committee. I will note that Tula Vista, the member city Tula Vista's nominees are not included because of Board Member, actually Vice Chair Padilla's illness. He was not able to review the applications and put in his nominees in time. So you'll see those appearing hopefully in next month's agenda. The four of the five member agencies have put forward nominees. And we, at the January meeting, we worked with the board and presented a scope of work for this committee, application criteria, and membership application, which the board approved, and we released for, close to a month, I think a few days over a month, and really pushed out this call for applications through social media and websites and email lists. I think each board member pushed it out through their own communication channels. We did some newsletters, et cetera. So we received 63 applications in total and shared those with, individually with each board, board member to review. And then you see the list of nominees here, and I'll leave this to the board members to discuss, but the list nominees are here. And we did break them out into nominee one and two because we did stagger the terms. If you recall, we wanted to make sure that the terms for both members from each member city didn't expire at the same time, and we wanted to make sure those were staggered. So we provided that, and one term expires in April of 2022, which is two years from now, and then the second one in three years from now. So you'll see the list of names here from each city, and the action here is to approve these nominees collectively of the board. And we, as staff, my staff has done a fantastic job keeping this moving and organizing this effort because we think it's very important, too. We will help facilitate the first meeting once the board, this Community Advisory Committee is seated. Thank you for that, and if you have any questions, we're here to answer them.
All right, thank you. Megan, do we have any public comment on this item? We do.
We have one public comment.
Let's go to the public comment first.
We have a comment from Jason Anderson. He states that he supports the City of San Diego's nominees, who are Eddie Price and Matthew Batalakis.
All right, all right, well, let's come back to the board here. And did you guys want to, well, let's do this. I will say that for the City of Encinitas, I put forth Gary Johns and Tara Hammond, and I think they're both excellent nominees, of course. Otherwise, I wouldn't have nominated them. But I think they're excellent nominees because they'll represent the City of Encinitas, and they're really engaged in the whole process of moving us to the Community Energy Program. And so I think they would serve really well on this committee and really help us with our tasks. So I can go to some of the other cities if you all want to say anything or if you just want to put forth a motion.
I'll say something. If you, can you hear me?
Yes, Board Member Baber.
I'm excited to nominate Lacy Byrd, a small business owner in La Mesa, because we felt it was important that business owners also have a stake in the community representation. And then we've, I also am super proud to nominate David Harris. And I can say with this not being hyperbole, I don't think La Mesa would be in this meeting if David Harris wasn't who he was. He was the earliest supporter of our Climate Action Plan, one of the earliest supporters of us moving to... I'm excited to nominate Lacy Byrd, a small business owner in La Mesa, because we felt it was important that business owners also have a stake in the community representation. And then we've, I also am super proud to nominate David Harris. And I can say with this not being hyperbole, I don't think La Mesa would be in this meeting if David Harris wasn't who he was. He was the one, the earliest supporter of our Climate Action Plan, one of the earliest supporters of us moving to 100% clean energy. And I'm super thankful for his commitment to it. And all of Mesa should be proud of him. And Lacy, thank you for serving. So I'm super excited for both Lacy and Mr. Harris being on our advisory committee.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Board Member Baber.
Chair, I'll, I'll go next. I, I just want to say, first of all, I'm really excited that we had so much interest in, in this committee, that we have just so much support within our, our county, our region. And then, you know, as we can see from the previous items throughout the state, like, you know, this is, we all really want to win on this. And in the community advisory committee is really going to be a big part of how we are connected to our communities and making sure that we do, we should do for our community. So I am excited to nominate Matthew Visalakis and Eddie Price to represent the City of San Diego on this committee. You have seen both quite a bit as board members. They are very active in this space and are trusted voices in this movement. And so I'm really, really excited to, to have them on this committee. And I, and I will move the item if it hasn't been moved. Staff recommendation.
All right. Motion by Board Member Montgomery.
Can I say something now?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, so, um, first of all, I want to say I agree 1,000% with what Board Member Montgomery said about the, the level of participation. And I just want everybody to know that still the City of IB was small, but we still had the highest percentage of people who applied. So but, um, I, I also want to thank a couple of good, dear friends of mine and people that are really important to making sure that the City of Imperial Beach embraces our Climate Action Plan and also becomes a leader in, in the, in our, in our all around in clean energy. So Anna Webb, you have been a stalwart for our community and, and you're doing great things. And I'm very honored. But, and then I also want to thank Mr. Tom Summers. He's been, he adopted so many of the clean power programs decades ago, and, and really has been leading the way. So both of them are going to be great additions. And thank you so much for your guys' for volunteering and being a part of this. And, and last but not least, I'm really happy that Monica got Eddie and Matthew to do, to get on as well, because those are, those are great additions. So yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Mark, is that a second?
Yes, that's a second. Sorry.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. And just to note, the City of Chula Vista will come back, will come back in, I think, the month of May with, with nominees for the City of Chula Vista. But we'll also move forward with seating the community advisory committee and move forward with, with some of the initial housekeeping matters. So we have a motion in a second, and we will now vote.
Board member Baber, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Board member Montgomery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Board member West, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chair Moscow, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all board members voting yes.
Perfect. Great. All right. Well, let's go to next, next item here, director comments. Anybody that would like to make comments? Any of our directors? Not seeing anybody jump. Mark, you don't want to say anything?
No, I said plenty tonight, so I'm, I'm good.
All right. Reports by management and general counsel. Cody or Ryan or Nick? Anything to report? All right.
Your report here.
Yeah, I've also said plenty, and I'm, I'm very excited to work with this community advisory committee. So thank you.
All right. So then what we will do is we will move to closed session. And so the, the board members will, will leave this, this Zoom meeting and, but this Zoom meeting will stay up and will move to another Zoom meeting and then come back to close it out. Is that how it?
Yeah, I have a brief, I have a brief statement to make for the public on this item. The board will now be entering closed session as stated on the agenda as items 13 and 14. In order to hold the closed session, the board will be leaving the Zoom meeting room. And the closed session is over. I, as general counsel, will return and report whether any reportable action occurred during the closed session. Members of the public are welcome to remain in the Zoom meeting until that time, but the session will remain silent. And I would just ask that SDCP staff and board clerk stay on until I return. And that we have sent you the Zoom meeting information in separate cover where you can find the login details there. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Slightly confused. I got, are you saying I got a separate email to enter a different meeting for the closed session? If so, can somebody resend that to me? I'm not sure I.
Did you receive the email from Ryan, from our general counsel regarding the closed session?
I will have to go look for it and see if it is. If, if I'm not on when we reconvene, somebody resend it to me.
Ryan, can we resend that to him?
Actually.
Now, Board Member Baber.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm actually looking for it. I don't believe that it, I have it, so.
Clarify, I need to stay in this meeting, correct?
Yes.
You and Ryan. If I could stay on to the reportable action.
Right. Megan, I think what he's saying is that this meeting would stay open, this open session, so that when we're done with closed session, that he's going to come back and report out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So did we, Ryan, did we want to resend to Monica and, and to Bill? Mark, did you get it? Mark is actually probably already on the other meeting.
I sent it to all of your city email addresses. I would have to pull them up in a separate spreadsheet that I have. So if you just give me a minute, I need to find your address. Unless, Nick, you have it right in front of you there.
Guys, I, I have mine. I found mine.
Okay, I just got the spreadsheet.
Yeah, I, I have.
It's, it's in the body of his memo that he sent. It wasn't a separate calendar invitation. It was just within that, that, that memo.
Okay.
All right. So then we're just going to send it to Bill.
I, I resent that to him. Yes.
Yeah, perfect. All right. Well, then I'm going to leave this meeting and go into the other one.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is Ryan Baron, General Counsel for San Diego Community Power. The Board of Directors for the San Diego Community Power closed session has now adjourned, and this is the official report out on closed session item, agenda item number 13, labor negotiations with the chief executive officer. No reportable action has been taken on item number 14 involving public employment. No reportable action has been taken. This concludes the SDCP board meeting. Thank you and good night.